Good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday, July 1st, 2025 Clay County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A few housekeeping rules tonight. We will hear two cases. We will begin with a report from the planning and zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and address. Please remember the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be the recommendation body for the two cases being heard tonight. These cases will be forwarded to the county commissioners at their meeting this month. And I'm sorry, I don't remember the date.
Yeah, if the if the board votes tonight, the cases will go July 17th, which is a Thursday.
July 17th, Thursday, in this room?
Correct.
At six o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. So could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance?
Mike Brinkley.
Here.
Mark Beggs.
Present.
Randall Morris.
Present.
Jerry Nolte.
Here.
Tom Degenhart.
Here.
Tom Decker.
Present.
David Rotis.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Present. Thank you. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of our March 4th, 2025 meeting and our April 1st, 2025 meeting as presented?
Motion to accept the minutes?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
The first case we're going to hear tonight is case number July 25-111 CUP. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, and we'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes, please.
And I do want to also make an announcement that the case number two, as the board indicates, has been withdrawn. So in case anybody is here for that case, it is not going to be heard tonight. Okay, so this is kind of a unique case. So it is an existing conditional use permit for resource extraction, a rock quarry, basically. The history of this property, and I'll show you, it's basically divided into two properties now. So we are basically, you can see there where the resource extraction is occurring. So that's the property we are talking about. This property, to the north and west, is the underground space, which is being converted into cold storage. So this property dates back to, the CUP dates back to 1980, when there was a conditional use permit approved to have a mobile home on the property and to do car repair inside the underground space. And the first resources extraction CUP was approved in 2009 to the current owner of the CUP, and that was renewed in 2024 with an administrative approval. However, the conditions from 2024 were not met by the applicant. So when staff realized that, and I'll go into more detail in this, but we basically started the process of talking with the applicant and seeing what needed to happen. This is 210 Highway to the north, Old 210, and then Rain's Road to the west. So this is basically a staff-generated proposal, because we are requesting that the current conditional use permit be revoked and a new conditional use permit be approved with new conditions that the applicant has agreed to those conditions. About the time that we realized the the conditions were not being met, we received concerns from an adjacent property owner as well. So we felt like the best way to move forward was to get those parties together. We held multiple meetings, discussed potential conditions, and the applicant or the CUP owner and the neighboring property owner that we met with have both agreed to those conditions. So want to talk about those conditions a little bit. So the 2024 conditions included hours that blasting could be done with 48 hours notice to neighbors, no blasting within 200 feet of property lines, dust control required, and then the county would like to vacate Rain's Road, or yeah, Rain's Road after the bridge, the old 210 bridge is replaced, and vacate that to the CUP owner to become just a private drive, because it's only useful for the, basically the quarry at this point. The two conditions that were not met were the haul road, and we'll talk about this in detail here in a minute, but the location where the trucks were to enter was supposed to be moved to lessen the effect on the adjacent property with that 2024 renewal, and the sewer system, which right now the quarry is tied into the sewer system with the cold storage, and it was agreed that that would be separated. That condition was not met with that renewal. The the current conditions that you have in your staff report today, they are very similar to the previous conditions. 18 of those 22 conditions carried over from the 24 report, and then even 15 from the 2009 report are still included in this 25 renewed conditional use permit. Now, on the screen, the the conditions that are kind of the yellowish color are the ones that are added as part of this report. So the minimum setback for blasting was increased from 200 feet to 250 feet from property lines, and no blasting of the snire bar layer within 400 feet of the property lines. We added a condition that said no truck traffic should cross the old 210 bridge. It's scheduled to be replaced, but even when it's replaced, it is not going to have the rating to handle the trucks fully loaded. Again, we're going to include the haul road to be moved to lessen the effect on the neighboring property and the sewer system be separated. And in addition, it's my understanding that the applicant or the CUP owner would like to use Old 210 as their access point for the haul trucks. And so from that access point to Rain's Road, the CUP holder would be required to maintain that section of road and fix any damage caused by the trucks. And the current interior haul road could only be used by light vehicles, and I'll show you that here in a second. We kept the blasting hours the same with the notice to the neighbors. And I should point out, on the 24 conditions, if it has that asterisk, that means it's also in the 25 conditions. Here is the property again. So that's the property we're talking about. And again, this is not expanding the quarry at all. It is the same CUP footprint that the original 2009 CUP was. The CUP owner would like to access off Old 210, and then from wherever that access is to Rain's Road here is what the CUP owner would be responsible for. And then the county would like to vacate that section of Rain's Road eventually when that bridge is replaced. This is a largely agricultural area. Here to the south, that's the compost facility, and mainly, there's a lot of floodplain and just a lot of farming in this area. We went through our public notice requirements. Staff is recommending approval with 22 conditions. Again, we had several meetings with the CUP owner and the adjacent property owner. All the conditions were agreed to, and as the chairman stated, this is, a county commission is the decision-making body on this case. And if the board votes tonight, it'll go to county commission on July 17th at 6:00 PM. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and Neil Bueller, who owns the CUP, is present as well.
Does anybody have any questions?
So is the current CUP still in effect?
It is, but the conditions haven't been met. It needs to be revoked for it not to be in effect, which only the county commission can do.
So clarification for me. If we vote tonight to recommend the revocation and the new CUP, it goes to county commissioners. If we vote to not approve it, it still goes to county commission for both items?
Correct.
Okay, so we are just a recommendation body on this?
On both items, yes.
No other questions? And we'll ask the applicant to step forward. Thank you.
Neil Bueller, 2520 Northeast, 103rd Terrace, KCMO.
Hello. Do you have anything to present to support your application?
Well, I think Kip pretty much explained the whole situation of what happened and the timeline of everything pretty much on the board there.
Okay, and so you understand the staff report. Do you have any questions?
No.
And you're in agreement with all of the conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I'm a bit curious why the previous conditions weren't met. On the previous? Obviously, you knew those conditions had to be met to keep your CUP, correct? Yes. Okay. So the haul road that was to be moved was part of the entrance, or they want the entrance moved that the quarry has had for 15 years. So in the original, the 2024 conditions, the entrance was to be moved to the southeast portion of the property. I agree to that, but when the road and bridge, well, I think it was the highway department at that time, they would not give a permit for that area. So I had to get a permit that went on the Rain's Road right next to Old 210. Well, the grade there to, from Rain's Road to the elevation that I need to get to is almost virtually impossible to put a road there where trucks could go up it.
What kind of elevation difference are we talking about?
Probably 50 feet within 100 feet.
Okay.
So that was, it was to take a lot of excavation, move a lot of dirt to get to that point. And I think that's about the time when Kip was wanting to come out and look at the conditions and see if they were met, and obviously, it didn't have them met at that time. Another kind of portion of it is that the scale house is at the entrance of the the property, which is next to the Cold Solutions. The truck traffic's still got to go through the scales to, that's, it's going to be going by that entrance anyway. So now, we're going to have to move the scales to the southern portion of the property that's closer to be the new entrance. I just received a permit yesterday to get onto Old 210. So, and we're, and I've been in the process of getting that new entrance down to Old 210, so it, you know, that's, I'm on the way of getting that done and finished out.
And the sanitary sewer separating those was part of the old permit, or part of the old CUP? Those are part of conditions of the old CUP? So you want to speak to those, why that wasn't happening, why that didn't happen?
That is, when I sold the property, I had an easement with the neighbors next door, and that encompassed an access easement, which encompassed the sewer system, the haul road going up to the top, and it just, I didn't get it done. It was right in the entrance of, it's kind of in the entrance of the of the property also.
So you just didn't do it?
So now I got a holding tank. I had to get it approved by the Clay County Health Department. So I got a holding tank that we're going to install. It's there to, because it's not, you can't put a lateral system in this area. It's impossible. So a holding tank's the next alternative, and I think the county has one holding tank in the whole county that some, I don't know where it is, but that's what they said. So I'll have the second one. But it's just a holding tank, because I cannot put a, it's not feasible to put a lateral field there for the sewer system.
So have you discussed?
And I've been tied into that, because I owned the Rush Creek properties, and it was all tied together 15 years ago, or 20 years ago.
And so have you discussed the holding tank option with the county?
Yes, I already got it approved, and I have the tank, and I just got to get it buried in the ground.
Okay. So I guess I'm just a little reluctant to approve anything when we approve, when you had approval in '24, and you didn't do it then. I don't have a lot of confidence where we're adding additional conditions that you're going to do this. I mean, you knew it was, you had to do it to keep your CUP before. I don't see adding more conditions and just hoping that you do it this time is going to make a difference. I mean, what's going to be different now than it was in '24?
The entrance is, relocating the entrance, I had to get a permit to get on the Old 210 to do that, and that's almost finished. I have the holding tank. It's, I just got to get a approved sewer guy to bury it.
So would you be opposed to putting, I noticed I went through the additional conditions, and it looks like there's only really one condition that has a time limit on it. Would you be opposed to us putting a more strict time limit on it? Say, instead of six months, we put it at three months?
Yes.
So that gives you July, August, September, say, October 1, have all this in place where your CUP goes away?
Yes.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I almost got the entrance, the new entrance, finished. It's just that I put it on hold, because I didn't have a driveway permit to get on Old 210 Highway. I got that yesterday.
Okay. I would just like some reassurances this is going to happen this time. I'd like to put a time limit on it so that you have a specific date to get everything done, so there's no drawing this out. They can come out on October 1, do an inspection. If it's all there, you're good. If it's not, you're not. The CUP goes away. And I assume that will shut you down, right?
It will.
Yeah. So there's a pretty big emphasis for you to get that done on time this time. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Appreciate it. I don't think I have any other questions.
Does anybody else have any questions? Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? No? Yes?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Anna Karstelich. I'm at Stinson LLP at 1201 Walnut Street in Kansas City, Missouri. I represent Cold Solutions, which is the neighboring property owner referenced in the report. As indicated in the report, there was a renewal of the CUP in March of last year, and the applicant accepted the conditions that were included, but did not fulfill them, and we do appreciate the comment about wanting to include assurances that this will be completed this time around. Cold Solutions was involved in the discussions with staff, appreciate that as well, and being involved in this process, and support the actions recommended tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Fred Foster Island, 18400 Foster Road and 18404, I'm directly north on that little box you saw just north of the property. Up there, you see that orange, and then you'll see the big square up there. That's my place. I'm not going to say I'm directly opposed to it, but I wasn't involved in any of the discussions to this, nothing. Keep in mind, property owners were involved in this. I've been involved now with both sides of me right now. I've got the cold storage over here that, we'll leave that at that, and I've got this up to south. I get dust, and then it's part of a quarry. I have to put up with it. But I guess I want to know what the resolutions, if I start getting more dust and more noise, and the blasting is within 250 feet of my property. I mean, I've already got caves all honeycombed through the back of there that they did illegally way back, not him. Neil didn't have anything to do with this, but years and years ago, they did that. I've got honeycomb caves back there that have collapsed. I already have filled those in, big sink holes. I've got areas you can see where it was. Now, if they start blasting again that close, is the rest of it going to start going out? I'm concerned that my backyard, my backfield's just going to sink out one of these days and go, start getting more and more of these sink holes out there. Some of them were 10, 12 feet deep. I had to fill them with concrete, basically. So I'm not saying I'm opposed to him getting his CUP. I want to see all these, like Mark was saying, excuse me, Mr. Baker was saying here. I just want to make sure there's remedies to this if something doesn't happen, you know. I'm concerned about the Rain's Road being not a road anymore. You know, that's an access point that we used to get around at the bottom of the bluff down to the backside back there. And when they fixed the bridge, that used to be our access point to get to the house. There is another one off 210. But if we try to run the trucks back through there and out the end of my driveway, which is Foster Road that comes down, it ends at my property. It goes to the bottom of the hill. That's our only access out. The trucks are going to increase from the cold storage. We're going to start getting semis from them. Then we're going to get more gravel trucks and stuff through there. That intersection is so dangerous at this point. So I'm concerned about the access point. I'm concerned about the traffic. Like I said, am I 100% against Neil getting this? No. But I'm just, I'm concerned, and I want to make sure there's remedies for me north of there when my field starts collapsing and everything else starts happening in there. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Does anyone on the board have any other comments they would like to make? Can I have a motion for the case being heard? First, in regards to the additional change for a three-month timeframe for the conditions to be met?
Mr. Chairman, you might want to do a motion regarding the first part of that, the request for revocation, and then a subsequent motion for approval of the new one.
Can I just start with the additional condition to change it to three months, then we'll do the revocation?
That's, I mean, that's fine if you want to add that wording in, but then actually revoke, then vote the new one.
So does anybody have any opposition to changing it from six months to three months to have all of these things done?
You don't need, do you need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion to have that condition added, do we? Just a motion, I'll add that in at that point.
Well, I just want to make sure I understand what condition we're trying to add, because condition number 12, which is the installing the new entrance, has a timeline of 120 days, four months, and the sanitary sewer has six months. So are we, are we requiring that all conditions listed need to be met within three months, or just specific conditions? Well, I think a lot of these conditions are operational, ongoing type conditions. So obviously, those will have to be in effect immediately. But the time limits you put on the road and the sanitary sewer, I think these would be shorter. So the amendment would be to change the 120 in six months to 90 days, correct? Yes. And I think the attorney, or- See, did you have a time limit on the sanitary sewer? I just saw the one on the- Yeah, it had six months on the sanitary sewer. It had six months on both. Yeah, I think both should be changed to three. And I think, Andy, we would want a motion for, to change those conditions, correct?
So we do need a motion to make that change?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Sure. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit with the revised conditions, with the changes that all the, it's number 12, and- And can we amend that? We're just going to make the motion to amend the conditions. Okay. Amend the conditions. And item 12, we already have 120 days on. And is it number 22? Number 18. Number 18. Yeah, 18 has, should be changed to three months instead of six months.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please, for that one?
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries. And so now you would move on to whether you're going to, yeah, revoke?
Okay. Can I have a motion for the revocation of the conditional use permit for March 24, March 24-101 CUP slash AC? This is recommendation only to the county commissioners. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to revoke the present CUP that's in effect.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart?
Yes.
Randall Morris?
Yes.
Mark Beggs?
Yes.
Mike Brinkley?
Yes.
Brad Scarlett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can we have a motion to approve with conditions the July 25-111 CUP request? Again, this is going to go to the county commissioners. This is not a final approval. Can I have a motion?
And this will be conditions as amended?
As amended.
I make a motion to approve July 25-1111 CUP with conditions as amended. Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Tom Degenhart?
Yes.
Randall Morris?
Yes.
Mike Brinkley?
Yes.
Mark Beggs?
Yes.
Jerry Nolte?
Yes.
Tom Decker?
Yes.
Chairman Brad Scarlett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next case that we're going to hear tonight is case number July 25-113A. This is a public hearing for approval of revisions to the 2011 Clay County Land Development Code. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to have the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes, please.
Alrighty. So today, we are talking about a possible amendment to land development code regarding intermodal shipping containers. First, I kind of wanted to start with some background information regarding this change and kind of how it came about. So the intermodal shipping container code was adopted in September of 2020. Back in May of this year, we had a variance request that, variance request in front of our Board of Zoning Adjustment Meeting regarding shipping containers for storage on a residential lot that did not meet the proper acreage size or setbacks. The Board of Zoning Adjustment went ahead and approved this. But what staff gathered from that meeting and what direction from the Board of Zoning Commissioners is that they had the interest in the need to loosen up our regulations regarding shipping containers and allow for more flexibility for citizens of the county. And I also, I would like to add too, we also received letters from people that were at that Board of Zoning Adjustment Meeting that showing support for the change of the code. Those are attached to the staff report as well. So, so I kind of broke this down into the three different categories or three different sections. The first section I'm doing is what is unchanging from our code, or what we're proposing to be unchanged. So we're keeping the same stacking of the shipping containers is going to be prohibited, not allowed for any use or residential use or human occupancy, and then housing of animals as well is prohibited unless it meets all proper building and county codes. So one of, and for the next section, kind of go into what are the big changes from what it was to what it's going to be. The first one is this, it's this table here that shows how many containers are allowed on what size lots. So on the, on the left-hand side, you have your, what the current code shows. So as you can see, you know, between 10 and 40 acres allows for one, anything less than 10 is none, and then it goes up through the acreage size. So the proposal was to allow for shipping containers to be on 10 acres or less, and then also kind of, not necessarily modernize, but bring this up to a more reasonable standard on how many acres. Instead of having 100 or more, they'll be allowed six. You know, if you have 40 or more, that would, what the proposal would be okay. So again, this is some of the other changes. We talk about the setbacks. With the original code, requires 250 feet from side and rear, and they are not allowed to be visible from any roadway. This proposal is to change a 250-foot setback to a 100-foot side and rear setback and a 50-foot, or, excuse me, I think I mixed those up, a 50-foot side and rear and 100-foot front setback. So we're adding the front setback to be allowed and also shrinking the side and rears. And so, let's see. So currently, we allow for shipping containers to be used for storage of, or to storage in house equipment or building materials during the construction of a project. This also requires a temporary storage permit, and a container is required to be removed within 30 days after the occupancy of that project has been issued. The change to this code would remove the requirement for needing a temporary storage permit and increase the amount of days a property owner has to get rid of that shipping container to 60 days instead of 30. So this would be the third section of kind of how this presentation is working out is the addition. So the stuff that's, that was added, that, just additional more clarification on kind of how we would regulate this. So with this amendment, it would require for shipping containers to be on a hard and leveled surface. Shipping containers must be, must be painted to match either an adjacent accessory building or, or the house. And then we also have some revamped screening requirements. So for lots that are five acres or less, 75% of the, the container has to be screened from view as this goes up in acreage. So between 5 and 20, it goes, or it goes down to 50%, needs to be obscured. And then if you're 20 acres or more, it drops it down to that 25%, needs to be obscured. So those are some of the big, the big highlights to what those changes are. Staff would be happy to answer any questions. The commission might have, and I believe we have citizens here that would like to speak on this as well.
So I've got a question, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't allow accessory buildings in front. Say they have, you've got 100-foot setback, but let's say they build a house that's 200-foot off the road. I mean, currently, we don't allow accessory buildings in front of that main structure. Is that correct?
So, yeah, so actually, we had, we recently, or not recently, I don't know, Kip, when that time was?
Yeah, probably 2019, that code was changed. So they are allowed. It was only in residential zoning, you could not have an accessory building sit in front of the front build line.
Okay.
But that was changed, so you are allowed that now. In ag zoning, you've always been allowed to have an accessory building in front of the build line of the house.
Okay. I guess my concern is having a shipping container in somebody's front yard. You know, if they're, it's 100-foot setback and their house is 200-foot off the road and they set a shipping container in their front yard and you only require 75% screening, I just wonder how that's going to look.
Well, it's, and that's why we did the screening and the painting to match the house.
Less effective.
Now, you could think about adding a condition, like if it sits in front of the house, it must be totally screened or something like that, but that's a good point.
Yeah. That was kind of my own, that was my first thought when I, when I read through that. I was just a bit of a concern.
I've got a number of questions. What justifies the reduction and how much needs to be obscured based on the amount of property? First of all, it seems to me that if you're concerned about the aesthetic quality of unincorporated Clay County, a 25% screened shipping container, just because it sits on 20 acres rather than on five acres, will still be as unsightly. So why not have the 75% screening on all of them?
You could choose to do that. I think the thinking there was the neighbors aren't as close. There's generally bigger, bigger lots in that area, and again, it's pay, it's...
But this is from the roadway. So somebody driving by, whether they're, yes, the neighbors, and I'll come to that in a moment, but in terms of people driving by on the roadway, they'll see a 25% screened one if it's a large lot and a 75% screened one if it's a smaller lot. Either way, from the roadway, it's, you know, the, the neighbors aren't the relevant factor.
Okay. So that's why we do the, the painting to either match the house or accessory building. And I believe there's also a condition that it must be kept in good condition as determined by planning and zoning. But again, that's something, this is a proposal. So this board could change it, or county commission could change it. But that was, that was the thinking is even if it's not screened, it's still required to be painted and kept up where currently the code doesn't require that.
My other question has to do with the lot sizes themselves. I can understand in the previous one where you had no containers allowed for less than 10 acres. You know, my neighbors live on three and a half acre lots, which now would be allowed to have shipping containers as long as they're 100 feet off the roadway and 50 feet from their neighbor's property lines. But there is no requirement to screen those from neighbors. And I can imagine that somebody sitting on their three and a half acre lot enjoying their backyard gets to look out at a 40-foot long, eight and a half foot high shipping container that is totally unobstructed because they happen to be the neighbor who lives behind the, or to the side of the, of the neighbor who's decided to put the container on it. So I would certainly like to see requirements to obstruct the view from all neighbors and not just from the roadway so that we don't create problems. Now, it's possible that some neighbors won't care, and they'll be happy to look at a container. In fact, they, they might use it for a graffiti board or something like that, maybe get a Banksy and raise the value of the, of the property itself. But I would like to see at least some legal recourse from the neighbors who's suddenly are not able to enjoy their backyard because somebody has stuck a big container 50 feet from their property line.
I have a question to piggyback on that as well as what are some of the smallest lot sizes we have in the county?
Oh, there's, there's lots under an acre.
So under an acre? So under an acre, we're still going to look at, according to this?
Yes. If they're able to meet these requirements, then they would be allowed to have that shipping container. So I don't know how much in-depth chain went into the, the Board of Zoning Adjustment hearing that we just had, but basically two container, containers were approved on a roughly three-acre lot. And rather than get all these applications for variances, we thought these rules needed to look, you know, loosen up a bit. Everything we're hearing from the public is they want these rules loosened up. And again, that's why we're, so to Mr. Morris's, talk about obstruction from view of all neighbors, that could be added, that could be changed. But again, that's why we're requiring that they be painted. So it's not just a rusty-looking shipping container. And to your Banksy comment, they cannot, that wouldn't be allowed. They, they, it has to be painted to match the house or accessory building, and they cannot, I think there's verbiage in there where they cannot, do you remember what we used? It was cannot modify.
Actually, I was thinking it's the neighbor who might do it so they, at least they can look at something that's attractive. But anyways, also, the fact that these are eight and a half foot tall, 40 feet long, and there's no prohibition of them being put on a foundation. It says this has to be a level ground, but it doesn't say that it can't be a foundation of some sort. So they could be taller than eight and a half feet. We have a prohibition against solar panels being larger than eight feet tall, but we're going to allow a 40-foot-long container to be eight and a half plus, depending on if they decide to put some foundation on it to raise it even higher. So I think something has to be done to obscure the view of this from neighbors who will find it an impediment to the enjoyment of their own property.
Yeah, I'd piggybacking on Chairman's comments because I was thinking, I was thinking, you were talking about small lots, say a subdivision that has one to two acre lots that even have CCRs for a subdivision, but those, most of those CCRs don't restrict storage containers? Because at the time the CCRs were written, it wasn't allowed, so they didn't need to restrict it? So now, this could open up a whole can of worms if the county's going to allow these storage containers and there's no CCR to prevent it. I can see where that could be a problem. I live in one of those kind of neighborhoods, and I don't think that would go over well if people started putting containers in their front yard because you've gone down to zero, zero to less than five, you could have one storage container. That could get ugly because I'm, there's a lot of those subdivisions in the county. So I don't know that I could support that proposal as it's shown. I think that could be bad.
I'm, I'm concerned because we have approved some relatively small lots and subdivisions where they, they were able to connect into a sewer system. And essentially, what we're saying is a quarter acre lot, side by side, 15 lots approved, every one of them can have one of these containers sitting in their yard. I don't agree with going below, I don't agree going below 10 acres. I could see an argument for five and above, but below that, you're, you're talking a quarter and quarter, half acre lot, you have a house and a little bit of yard, and you have trouble squeezing a swimming pool in. How are we going to get a shipping container into these subdivisions?
Is, did you, is that a question?
I'm asking for discussion with the board.
Okay, okay.
Is it, is anyone else having?
I agree with you. I think it could be a real problem. Yeah.
And what, this is a question, what was the explanation given for the variance?
Well, so I would invite you to go back and watch that BZA meeting because we had a roomful of people in support of allowing the two containers on three acres. The, I think a lot of the reasoning was they were painted to match the house, they were partially screened, and the neighbors could hardly see them.
Did the BZA approve them?
Yes.
How'd they get past the, you can't give a zoning adjustment if it's something that you caused? How'd they get past that question? Because that was, I was sat on, as you know, I sat on that board. That was always the kicker. Nobody typically get over that.
Heck, yeah. And again, I would invite you to, you can watch that on YouTube or go on the county website and watch the stream of that video to hear some of the comments from the neighbors and the board members.
Did you have much in the way of opposition to it at the BZA? Was it sufficiently well-publicized? Because I can imagine that people would, would be raising bloody hell that they thought that their neighbors can start putting these massive metal containers on their backyards and that not affecting property values.
It was well-publicized. There were yard signs in support of the case. There were Facebook posts in support of the case. I got called a Nazi because we were trying to regulate the property owner.
That's always the case.
And there was one...
That's nothing new.
One, yeah, that's true. That, there was one letter, anonymous letter of opposition and one person that attended the meeting that opposed. And that's why you see the revision that's in front of you tonight.
So are these like a long-term, if you bring in one of these shipping containers, it could be there for years and years?
As long as they met, you know, stayed up with the maintenance and kept it in compliance.
Twenty-foot or 40-foot or 53-foot containers?
Yeah, we talked about the size and whether we should put a size limitation on them, but we did not include that.
Well, it's, because some of our verbiage, I think that you're, you haven't redlined, is that the intermodal shipping containers for temporary housing of equipment and materials during construction. And then when the occupancy permit is issued, property owner have, now would have 60 days to remove the shipping container. So that's going to go away, and the shipping container could stay for years and years and years as well as, as long as it's maintained and in code.
Well, currently, so if you're building a new home and you want to have a shipping container for temporary storage, you have to pull an extra permit, and it has to be gone within 30 days of the temporary. Now, if you meet the current code with the shipping container, it can stay. But with the update, it extends that 30-day period to... But with the update, it extends that 30-day period to, to 60 days. And then you would just have, if you want to keep it, you just have to meet whatever the revision, revised code is, if we revise it.
No one, no one's exempt from being forced to remove it because we're starting off at zero acres.
Correct, yeah. Any, 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 any parcel in unincorporated, if they could meet these conditions, would be allowed a shipping container. But again, you could, if, if the board agreed and wanted to do an, change amendments, you could set a minimum if you chose to.
There are a number of amendments I'd want to make in terms of the height of it and what sort of foundation, if any, can be placed on it in terms of the lot size, also obviously the, the numbers and, and the, the degree to which it's obstruct, the view is obstructed on all of those different lot sizes. Again, I don't think the fact that somebody's plopped it on a 20-acre lot makes a difference in terms of the enjoyment of neighbors. I would rather see this perhaps tabled and brought up at the next meeting so that some of these revisions can be made over the month.
Well, and I, I, I think we need to hear from the public because I, before we make any, you know, definite, we want to change this or that, but I think you ought to hear, you know, there were some letters included in the packet. And then I believe there might be some members of the public that want to speak tonight.
I'm just curious, how many BZA classic cases have you had in the last year for shipping containers? Is it a lot? Is it a lot or is it just?
No, but our concern is with that lot, the one, the one we just had was within the past couple of months. And I've, we've already received calls wanting to do the same thing. And we, we are telling everybody to hold on and let's see what we, what we do with the code. If it's not changed, yes, I would expect we would be inundated with requests.
Any other questions from the board?
Couldn't the BZA always just postpone discussions of it until the planning and zoning board came up with a final proposal for the commission?
Yeah, and that's what we're telling people now. We're not, for code enforcement, I've told my code enforcement inspector to stop enforcing any shipping container code at this point. Because I don't want to enforce the code as it is now on somebody right now if it's going to change in a month. So we're not moving forward with anything. We would, we would advise people not to apply for the BZA at this point until something's determined here.
Excuse me, I didn't understand. If you're not enforcing the code, does that mean somebody could just plop one on their property because you're not enforcing it?
At this point, yes. I'm not going to send a, a code enforcement letter on a, a code that is in the process of being changed. Now, it could become a code case if they don't meet these requirements later on. But I, I don't want to be the person that tells them they have to remove their shipping container and then the next day the code gets changed and guess what? That shipping container could have stayed.
But it's okay to let them put it on and then the next day tell them they have to move it. Because that's what the, the policy became. So either way, you've got a problem of either you're going to enforce it and not allow them to put it on, or you're going to allow them to put it on and perhaps tell them to take it off.
Well, I hate to tell you, but we, we, we current, we, I'm trying to think of the right way to word this. We generally don't find out until the shipping container's there. So most people don't ask, think it's allowed. So most of the time it is after the fact.
Anything else from the board? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application? Please step forward. Wanted to sign, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Nicole Paff. I live at 1045. Thank you. Northeast 144th Street. I'm on the corner of Mount Olivet and 144th Street. I would encourage anyone that has any questions about shipping containers to look at them. I agree that ones that have the, the painted signs and they look like they got them out of a boneyard and set them on their property, they're very unsightly. I think that the commission, the planning commission's done a great job in outlining stipulations to make them not unsightly. I think the screening is wonderful. People don't want to drive down the road and look at them, but they are a cost-effective storage way to store, opposed to building a building from scratch. And, and it's not cheap. Concrete's not cheap. I don't know if you've priced concrete? It's very expensive.
Unpriced.
Right. See, so I think, you know, meeting and, and listening to the public and getting with the times of, of modern times and the tariffs and building prices, this is the way to go. And it is mice-free. Mice can't get in your shipping container. And like I said, the stipulations are good. We live on a three-acre lot. So, and we are, you know, fell into that same category. We didn't know that we couldn't have one. My husband's going to speak so he can tell you the whole history of everything. But I do encourage you to, to investigate it and look at it and see that there, there are ways to put them screened properly and looking nice and landscaped. And they did approve one last month and those people have two containers, I believe. You might correct me if I'm wrong. And I don't think they had three acres. Maybe they did. But, so it kind of set a precedent that, oh, well, we won't wait to do a variance because the board that was here encouraged planning and zoning to go back and come up with some remedies that would be more inclusive for people instead of doing the variance. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak that supports?
My name is Brent Pass. I live at 3405 Northeast 144th Street and I'm married to that lovely lady right there. We are owners of a Conex or a shipping container or an intermodal shipping container, not because we wanted to. We bought our house in October of 19, of 2022 and we bought it with three acres and it had an outbuilding. I thought, great, I can have a shop. I have a place to put my lawnmower, a place to put a little wood shop in, everything will be just fine. This is going to be, this is going to be swell, honey. Well, in the meantime, at that time, I was traveling for work. This was in October of 22, I was traveling. I didn't get home until March of 23. And that lovely lady packed us, unpacked us and made us a beautiful home. When I got home, I got a call from NW Electric saying that my building was illegally placed there and needed to be removed. And I was flabbergasted. She said, you've got to be kidding me. How could this be? I just bought the place six months ago. There's no way that this is, this is happening. Sure enough, he came out and said, you've got four utility lines going right over top of your building and this building is here illegally. And I said, okay. So I thought about it, had conversations with Mr. Jones, had conversations with my lawyers, had conversations with NW Electric, hoping for an easement, hoping for, or hoping for a variance. And none of that came to fruition. Took the previous owners to small claims court, saying you built this building illegally because there was not a permit pulled. Mr. Jones verified that. They also took the garage away from the house and made a beautiful living room, which I've done a lot of work in. But again, no permit was pulled for that. So I have no place to store anything. Not a, not a trash can, not a weed eater, not my lawnmower. Because I purchased a property with an illegal building on the property. Title company should have done something, should have been, should have been, you know, brought up to my attention at some point, never did happen. But that's neither here nor there. Right now, I've got the beautiful grass where that building was because I can't have that building there anymore. NW Electric threatened us with trespassing and we're gonna, and we're gonna, threaten us with trespassing on Monday. Wednesday, they told us that. I called in favors to my buddies and Nicole got on the, on the horn and found an opportu, or found several different places that sell or rent intermodal shipping containers, or as I call them, Conexes. She found one, the man was able to bring it out to us on Friday. Friday afternoon, Friday morning, Friday afternoon, we had more friends come in and unload all of this stuff. Our son moved back in with us after a long-term relationship and I have all of his stuff too. He's 20, at the time was 25 years old. So two grown men who are contractors and who have got, well, everybody's got storage boxes and stuff like that, but I have no basement either. So that was my storage facility. I was forced to remove my building where I stored all of my stuff, my lawnmower, my weed eater, my paint, my caulk, my, you know, you name it. So we got this container. And it's been great. Rodents don't come in it. It's brand new, it's beautiful, it doesn't have rust on it or anything. It's a fantastic facility to store our stuff. In the meantime, we tried to build our building again. Other bad luck, you don't need to hear all of that, but that container has been with us for about a year now. And we ended up, you know, like I said, we, we did, we rented it for a little bit and we ended up purchasing it. It has kept all of our tools. Our son is a hunter. He has duck decoys that are hanging in there, things that you don't want out in the weather. My lawnmower unfortunately gets covered up with a tarp with jugs of water holding the tarp down so it doesn't get rained on. Because I have no place to put it. Because I was forced to remove my building by NW Electric or I'd be thought for trespassing. I think what is, is, is proposed here is fair by all means. When, when we were here last month and it was zero to 10, you, you can't have it. I didn't know. I had a man call me and say, you're in violation and your, and your, your intermodal shipping container is illegally on your property. I had no idea. I'm not going to break the law. Mr. Jones and I have had conversations. I said, Mr. Jones, I'm going to have to destruct my building. I got a deconstruction permit and then I got, and I got another building, or another permit to build my building. I do things by the law. I work for a construction company and we do things by the book. I would never do anything illegally. Now, this proposed code, I, the building that I just built, that my, my intermodal shipping container would go behind it and would be 80% obscured from the Mount Olivet side of the road. And, and it would be an opportunity for my son to be able to store his tools, his, his ladders, his scaffolding, his duck decoys, his fishing boat if he wanted to. And it's rodent-free and it's dry. Nothing gets in it. Not like a lot of the buildings in this county that are outbuildings, that are sheds, that are leaning, that have doors that don't close, allow water to come in. I don't understand why I can't have a beautifully intact, relatively inexpensive container to store my stuff. But yet, an old dilapidated building on a property can still be there. So I really, I like the, the new proposed code, obviously because I'm under the, under the five acres, which is very helpful to me. I would love for you to reconsider this and think about, most people that have these don't live in a neighborhood, don't live in, you know, a subdivision. A lot of these folks that have them are on anywhere from three to five to 10 acres and, and need them or use them. And that's what we're using it for. So I strongly consider, I would strongly appreciate if you would reconsider or consider this proposed code that Mr. Jones has put forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other gentleman that'd like to speak next?
I have a question.
Please state your name, address for the record.
Mark Dross, 19822, Northeast 161st Street, Kearney, Missouri. I am the property that received the variance for two containers on my three and three-quarter acre property. I invite the board to come by my property and take a look at the containers to see that they're really not unsightly. They've been maintained, they're on a solid gravel surface, they've been leveled professionally. They've been painted to match the house. Now, the outbuilding will also get painted to match the house very soon. Also, the containers we use are strictly for fundraising purposes for animal welfare societies. So it's important to note that. This is great because it would have allowed us to not have to go through all of the trouble that we went through to get our variance. But we are very grateful that we did. And, and I think if you come by the property, you can, you can see for yourselves that it's not unsightly. And we've definitely taken care of, of the containers in a way that, that makes them a little less visible.
Did you have a question that you'd like me to ask Kip?
Oh, well, yeah. Can that variance be removed for any reason? Because I just painted a target on myself. Can that variance be removed for any reason since I just painted a target on my back?
I do not believe so, but Kip will have to answer that.
Uh, no, the variance is issued. I, I never even thought about revoking a variance, so I don't know what that process would be.
Thank you.
I've not heard of it.
So again, I think that within reason, if people take care of their, of their containers and they paint them up, and these were great rules. I thought they were fantastic. I mean, and they kind of look like they were molded after our situation, so. But I do invite you to come by and look and, and see for yourselves that it's just not as horrible as people painted out. Thank you.
What was your address again?
19822 Northeast 161st Street. We are, we are in the corner of Jesse James Farm and 161st. It's easy to see our property. We have a 12-foot skelly dressed up as Uncle Sam on the front lawn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak that supports the proposal?
Milton Greider, 12825 Northeast 144th Street, Kearney, Missouri. I agree with a lot of this stuff. Some of the things I'm not underst, it's hard for me to hear some of this. This gentleman was talking about height of some of these containers. When you buy them, they are what they are. And the ones that I have had was nine-and-a-half foot. And I got a letter saying that they weren't in compliance. We've already gotten rid of one. Then I talked to Kip and he said that they were going to change things, so we still have the, the second one. I live on, I've got 50 acres and it seems to me that the, what I'm hearing, the majority of the discussion is on small lots. And I understand a lot of that and there's, up where we're at, there's a lot of them on small lots. But I'm more concerned because I have agriculture and I do hay and machine, I have machinery and all that kind of stuff. And we stored machinery in the ones that we had. And I'm kind of looking more towards that side, I guess. And the, the other thing I have to throw in, and I hope I'm not shooting myself in the foot, we've been on this property for years, since back in the 50s. And I've got seven semi-trailers that have been there for 20, 20-plus years. And the county's aware of it. And they're grandfathered in and I've even talked to Kip about it. They're no ways near as attractive as these shipping containers, especially when they're placed right, painted, et cetera, et cetera. And I've even asked that in regard to the containers as opposed to the semi-trailers, which the semi-trailers are the same, they're 45-foot, except they're, the ones I have on wheels are like 13-foot tall. I asked Kip at the time that we were talking in regard, initially in regard to this problem, if I could, I have the ability to put wheels and dollys under the shipping containers, which would make them the same thing as a semi-trailer. And he said that would not work. At the same time, I asked, well, how about on my semi-trailers? If I took the axles out and the dollys out and placed them on the ground, it'd be the same thing as a shipping container. And again, there was no concern about the semi-trailers. So I'm just, I need them, I really need them for storage for, they're good for like small tractors, machinery, things like that on the farm. And like this lady back here said, they are a very inexpensive way of storage. You know, 145-foot by eight's what, 300-some feet? And you get down to what that costs, that's like $10 a foot, as opposed if you build a building, you're looking at $50, $60 or more a foot. So I guess my concern is, is about the, the larger acreages as opposed to just the lot, smaller lots, heights and the kind of things that have been discussed here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that supports the application being heard?
Chad Spicer, 22201 Northeast 188th. I recently- I recently built a home on a property there, it's basically 188th and Old BB. As we were building, I brought a shipping container over, had no idea that, you know, that was a problem because it was the country. Didn't even cross my mind. I got an ordinance notice or violation notice, started talking with Kip and got a temporary permit for that. And then, you know, I need to move it from where it's currently at after the temporary to its permanent location because it's currently over 10 acres. So I got that all straightened out and everything. But there are, like everybody said, they're very economical, they're great use, all that kind of thing. So I guess I really don't have anything extra to say, I just want to say I support it, the due proposal, but I do also understand the aesthetics of, you know, not wanting to piss off your neighbors, you know, by sticking an ugly container right in their way and that kind of stuff. So I think reasonable regulations or whatever, I can't think of the correct term I want to say, but I don't think it would be unreasonable to have these containers properly maintained and at least partially obscured and all that out the country. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that supports the application?
My name is Stephen Schaefer. I live at 18700 Old BB in Holt, actually across the street from Mr. Spicer. I also am in support of this proposal. To start off with Mark's property here, I drive by it 20 to 30 times a week for as long as he's lived there and I've never noticed he's had a container once, not to this day. I couldn't tell you. I actually pulled in his driveway last week to drop, or last year to drop off some property and had no idea that he had any containers in his yard, so. And I don't know, how big is your yard?
It's screened three-quarter acres and the containers are 20-foot or 40-foot.
So, and I've never even seen them, honestly. Drive by it all the time on Jesse James Road, so. Mr. Spicer here, during the construction of his property, which is right across the street from mine, I'd noticed he had a shipping container in there and it was a really nice-looking shipping container, so I pulled in and asked him about it. And I'm like, "Hey, that's, you know, a nice shipping container, how much that cost you?" And he told me how cheap it was and I thought that would really be a great, you know, storage container. But then he also informed me that, "Yeah, well, there's regulations," so. Long story short, his is not an eyesore to me, I'm right across the street from him, like I said. He lives at the southeast corner and I live at the southwest corner of 188th and Old BB. And it's not an issue with me. So, actually, I think there's another shipping container on the property too and it doesn't bother me and haven't seen it. I mean, it's just not noticeable. And I'm also with this gentleman here, not to confuse shipping containers with semi-trailers because there is a difference when they sit up on a wheel and they're big, higher like that, whereas shipping containers are right there on the ground and they're just a great inexpensive use for storage, as those people pointed out, so. That's mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that supports the application? Is there anyone that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? All right. Public discussion is closed. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the public participations comments? I think they were all supportive.
So, I would say, you know, we talked, I'm kind of mad at Pete for bringing up the semi-trailers, so. I don't want to give anybody ideas, we're going to address that in the overall revision of the code. So, if anybody's watching this, those aren't going to be allowed either. But other than that, we, I just would like some guidance, you know, if you want to, if there's a consensus that you want to make some changes, I'd like to walk away with, from tonight's meeting with, you know, some rough ideas on what those changes should be. And then, if you don't vote tonight, then present something to you at our next meeting.
I'm not sure whether or not we need to postpone this for the next meeting to table it and so on, but first of all, I want to say that I have no objection in principle to shipping containers, okay? I have thought about putting them on my property myself. My concern is not with somebody who has attractive shipping containers, partially, you know, things that are not unsightly. The point of regulations, however, is to protect people from bad actors. And the fact is, is that while somebody might have a very nice and attractive, well-painted, well-maintained, partially obscured, shipping container, as written, nothing is to prevent somebody from having something else. Yes, it has to be painted, I understand that, but that doesn't necessarily make it attractive. I have 34 acres left, having sold 16 acres. I could, under the current thing, put 160 feet of shipping containers 50 feet from my neighbor's yard. And if they're all painted beige, who the hell cares? It's going to be ugly. Okay? So I want in this something that, now, if I planted evergreens for 160 feet, my neighbor may not care, because at least I've taken care of the fact that they don't have to look at it. And to me, what's important is to protect the neighbors, not just the people driving along the roadway, but people who weren't suddenly expecting to have a large shipping container put 50 feet from their house, from their backyard. So, for me, at minimum, I think we would need to have something that requires that these be obscured from the neighbors' properties as well, so that they have some legal recourse against people who are not considerate of what their neighbors would think. So, were there other issues? Nine and a half feet tall? Well, I think then we need to allow solar panels. But those are other issues.
I think I'm in agreement with what you're saying and I also think what Chairman brought up is valid too, I think these smaller lots. So maybe the way around that is, instead of making the 50-foot setback, you make that setback wider, wider so that a small lot, that setback would close on itself, there would be no room. So maybe that's something we should look at, is increasing the setbacks, because I think it would be a problem on, say, a quarter, half-acre lot to have a shipping container, because the neighbors are going to see it, they may not want to see it. I think it's valid. What that number is, to quantify that, I'm not sure. That's, I guess that's something we need to discuss.
And can I add to that? So with the set, the current setback from the side property line's 250 feet, we came across lots that were 10-plus acres that they couldn't meet that requirement. So that's a good point.
That's because we made those shotgun, we weren't going to do that, remember? Last 15 years, we weren't going to do that.
And I'm going to say it again, I think we do have an issue with allowing this on any lot from zero on up, because I know within the last year or so, we have approved subdivisions that were able to attach to sewer where the lots were maybe a quarter acre, half acre in size. I'm just struggling with seeing that particular subdivision or, and we have several in the county, that one's just the most recent, and every single one of those sticking a shipping container in their backyard. So, I'm still thinking that I would like to see an acreage requirement. I agree that they should be allowed in the countryside, but for us to just say, quarter-acre lots, everybody can have a Conex box in their backyard, just seems a little strange to me. And I agree that the neighbors need to be screened, not just from the road. But we also have an issue where those setbacks, I believe, are very similar to what our building setbacks are. So if somebody is able to build a metal building, isn't the setback kept 50 feet from the property line unless it's for livestock?
From the front property line?
From the side and the back.
From, so for an accessory building, from the front property line, it's 50, five-zero feet. If it houses animals, it's 100 feet. Most side setbacks, depending on zoning, are 15 feet. And then that goes up to 50, five-zero, if it houses animals. And that, that's honestly one of the reasons, you know, we went with the setbacks we went with, is the, I think the biggest side setback we have is that 50-foot for the building with animals.
And do we have any such requirements or screening from neighbors, from the road or from side or back?
Not for, not for a standard accessory, you know, pole barn type building, no.
Okay. And I have not watched the video, but it appears that the variance commission, I, in my opinion, they're viewing the shipping containers the exact same way as they're viewing a metal barn that's being put up. I'm not seeing that they're viewing these any differently. Is anybody else on the board seeing this differently? Because I was not at that meeting and I have not watched the video. Is there anyone on this board that thinks a shipping container is different than a frame-built metal building?
Well, I think they're different.
Yeah, I do too, yeah.
Okay. So what are some of the differences then that you're seeing?
Hopefully a frame-built.
Just from aesthetics, I mean, windows, doors, trim, I mean, roofline, I mean, whole nine yards, I mean, it's, they're different animals for sure, in my viewpoint, anyway?
I agree. I just was wondering if anybody else was seeing a difference, because it doesn't sound like the variance commission was seeing that the shipping container was any different than a frame-built building, whether it was post-in-frame, steel frame, or sticked frame, We can vote on this to approve, disapprove, or move this to next month or the month after for further review. I'm talking to the board right now. So, if I'm going to ask for a motion, all of those items are available.
We could also make a motion to amend this one as.
That was the very last one, I'm just not sure that we're in agreement on all of the amendments that need to be made based on the comments that I've heard from the board tonight.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think this is, I think this requires a little bit of study.
I have a question for staff. On the semi-trailers, is there a minimum acreage?
I don't believe it's addressed in the code at all. It might be, at least in ag or residential. In commercial zoning, I think it talks about, it talks about vehicle, large vehicles, but it doesn't talk about semi-trailers, so that's something we're going to have to look at and address.
I mean, if I had a quarter-acre lot, I'm not really that wild about either one of them. If I had a quarter-acre lot, I'd rather have a container next to me than I would a 40- or 50-year-old semi-trailer.
Yeah, so that, that's why I'm mad at Pete for bringing that up. So, I don't know, from staff's perspective, I think I'm hearing three things. Do we screen, do we require screening to the side property lines? Do you want to put a minimum acreage of possibly three acres? You have to have, right at three acres or above to have a container. And then possibly, do we want to increase the screening, which is on this? There was, there was at least one member brought up, why not require 75% screening on all? So those are the three items that I've heard, but I don't know if there's consensus to do those three. If there is, we could amend that, you could vote tonight if you wanted to.
I would like to see 75% screening on, from roadway and from neighbors, from, and probably a three-acre minimum. I think if you get three acres, then I don't see a storage container itself being inherently part of that. From, you can place it sufficiently far from the neighbors and screen it, whatever certain weight may be, I guess, is limiting the height. It's like, you know, nine and a half, if someone's had a nine and a half-foot tall container.
That's a fairly normal height.
Turn on your mic.
Well, my mic keeps going off. I think it gets timed out or something like that.
No, that's me doing that.
You know, so, and height may not again be a problem if it is screened off from the neighbors. You know, you can have tall evergreens as well as wide ones. So maybe height isn't the issue, but probably a three-acre minimum and screening on, from the roadway and neighbors at 75%, and I'd be happy.
And what is the definition of screening?
So let me, so, in the full text, we have, it says, "Consumers may be obscured from view by other structures, landscaping, fences, or other means approved by the planning and zoning department. If vegetative screening is used, it must consist of evergreen trees or shrubs that retain the foliage year-round."
But no height requirement? So, I'm going to use the example of a nine-and-a-half-foot container sitting on a gravel-level pad that's one foot off of the actual dirt, and we put up a six-foot privacy fence.
Is it 75% screened is what we would have to figure out.
And the same thing with plantings, so we're not.
Yeah, there's a little bit of discretion, I don't know how we make it black and white, but that's going to be discretion by our code inspector on a daily basis.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were catching up.
You're saying screening is going to be a discretion, except for you just said.
Well, I mean, we're not going to get it exact 75%. Are we going to know, is it 74, 76? But.
Well, just make 100, call it good.
I don't know that you can ever get to 100.
These type of 300%, it'll cover 100% of height.
Yeah, I agree.
Shouldn't be any shorter than a 100-foot container.
I'm afraid they're going to start off with seedlings that are about 12 inches high. They're going to grow into 30 years.
Exactly.
One of the things that I wanted to make mention of was, I'm probably, I know there are a couple of other people in this room, but I'm one of the few that do not live on acreage. I live on a quarter-acre lot, which is decent size for my neighborhood, I'm in a suburban setting. But something that certainly has impressed me, not only sitting on this board, but also just as a county commissioner, and that is, people who live in the unincorporated areas are a little more sensitive about the aesthetics, or can be, of course. We just had our neighbors put a big dumpster in the front as they were, I guess, renovating their house, very happy to see it go. I think, that being said, as far as whatever we do, I think we should do it within this body, because if you look at the way this body is made up, it's going to be made up of people who live in the areas that would be affected by this much more and would be more plugged into those sensitivities. When it goes to the commission, I believe there are two of us that I'm aware of that live on acreage. The rest of us are suburbanites, so to speak. And I think that if we're going to make an accurate judgment and a good decision here, it should be made here because of the experience that is here, and then send it to the commission as a little bit more thought-out kind of a thing. Obviously, the commission has the option to alter it when it comes before us, but I'm kind of inclined to take advantage of the wisdom here, even if it means, and I'm not saying we should, but if it means we take this up at a future meeting, I think we're going to come out with a better, a better product than we will if we leave it to the county commission to do that. Just, I guess, no disrespect to my colleagues, but the experiences around this particular table, not that particular table as much. I also like the idea of this, of the more enhanced screening. I just think it helps, but I realize that's as more, as much art as science when it comes to how much are you obscuring and, but I think that, I think we should probably get it right here. I think, I just think this is the proper tool, as opposed to, because quite honestly, you guys have the experience to a degree, we may well be to some extent putting our finger in the wind and seeing what happens. So I would, my preference would be that we keep it here until we are happy with what the product is and then go from there, whatever method that may be, because I do have a lot of sympathy for what you're saying. 'cause I, I do have a lot of sympathy for what you're saying about, uh, the aesthetics of it, and while we have some folks here who, who could absolutely speak to that, um, I, I can, you know, I, I think we can rest assured that when it comes up, there may be those who have a different point of view, so, um, that's, that's kinda what I have to say about it, and I, like I say, if that means we take another shot at this thing, and come up with some, um, some more specific changes, then, um, I would be okay with that, but, regardless, guys who know more than I do about it speak.
Well, I, I think what you're really saying is the same thing that we've been saying, is quarter acre lots are too small for a storage container. I, I just don't see that happening, so I'm having an issue with the zero and up, especially knowing what we've been approving in the county, given the proliferation of sewer systems that are being privatized. Uh, I think we have an issue with screening. I'm not sure we're going to all come to an agreement tonight, I think we've been given the opportunity to do some additional review, we can take a look at what occurred during the variance meeting, um, we've been offered an opportunity to do a drive-by, given an address, um, it's, it's my opinion that I'm not comfortable with the proposed changes. So if I was going to ask for a motion, I would ask for a motion to postpone, given the fact that I think we have heard from the board that additional screening on all sides is required, that a, there has to be a lot limitation, given the fact that the size of these storage containers are getting bigger and bigger and bigger, you know, there's twenty foot, there's thirty foot, there's forty foot, I'm sure there's a four, a fifty foot as well, I've seen fifty-three foot containers, um, and I'm not sure that everybody on this board is in complete agreement, or has even had a chance to wrap their arms around this issue as of tonight, so. Do you have any other suggestions, Kip, or any questions of the board at this time?
Uh, we're happy to, to do whatever the will of the board is. Uh, if you, if you do choose to continue it, uh, my request would be that you continue it to the next, uh, meeting that we have an additional application, because there's a good chance we will not have a meeting next month. And then I would ask, if you go that route, to either call or email me individually, what your thoughts are as far as changes, and we'll try to work those into the code.
And I think everyone on the board should reach out to you directly to have that conversation, or you can reach out to us individually to have that conversation.
So if we table this, do we want, I don't wanna come back with the same information that we have, seems like we should give staff some direction on what we need to see. I mean, first thing I thought of is, how difficult is it to show us how many lots are affected, varying setbacks? Is that a couple taps on a keyboard on a computer, is that, or is that many, many man-hours?
Uh, that's a good question. If, if it is an easy solution, it would be through our GIS system, and I just don't know, we can look at something like that to see how many lots would be available to meet the current code, I just, I, I can't guarantee we can get that easily, but we could look at that.
Okay. I mean, that would be something that might be helpful, just a color-coded map showing, hey, here's all lots that could have a container at a fifty-foot setback versus a hundred versus, um, and just lot sizes in general, I think might be helpful. How many do we have that are, you know, under an acre? That might, that'll give us some scope, you know, big picture, what we're looking at, I, I'd like to see that, if it's easily.
I, I agree, I'd, I'd like to see anything that's an acre or less, and how many of those lots do we have in the county, but also under three acres, I think.
Yeah.
And, and because it's not only that we can say there's an acreage limit, and some of that is just common sense, we've got quarter acre lots that you can't even put a swimming pool on, because we've got a septic system, because in the past, currently not allowed, but in the past, we could have extremely small lots with septic systems, and, uh, this particular requirement, we could be setting these boxes on top of septic systems in these very small lots, that, that's another concern.
I assume the, the health department would not allow that.
Well, currently, nobody's asking questions, they're just, it's, it, they have one box that's allowed, and they're gonna move on, they're not gonna ask where it's sitting. So that, that's the other issue, is when we had requirements for a permit, a lot of those things were being addressed, now what we're saying is, no, you can just have one, two, three, or four of them, you can put it anywhere on your property, as long as the neighbors can't see it, so I, I think we've got a, an acreage limitation that was gonna have a problem with. But, I agree with the screening, I agree with the limitation on the size, but then it also may be that, with the twenty-foot cargo bodies, and the thirty-foot cargo bodies, and the forty-foot cargo bodies, that they need to be proportioned to the size of the lot, so it's another option, but I think if we can get the number of lots in the county... Go ahead, Kip.
So, so it, it would still be considered an accessory structure, so they're gonna have to, um, apply for a permit. Now, the septic discussion is, is interesting, because depending on what type of project people are doing in unincorporated now, we do require, on some projects, what's called a site approval from the health department, for them to verify that the location of the structure isn't gonna interfere with the septic system. We don't require that on farm-use-only buildings, but we do on accessory buildings. So we could require that, uh, that would go along with our current process now. Um, the only unique thing about that is, uh, I, I, right now, I think in the, our fee schedule, a shipping container permit is ninety dollars through our department, so it's not costly, and I think the health department charges like a hundred and thirty-five, just to verify it's not gonna interfere, so you'd be looking, you know, a little over two hundred bucks for everything they would have to submit to us to, to get the permit. So just know that we, that would be part of the process.
Where is the permit required in the new proposed code, though? Because what we're, what we're learning tonight is that we already have these boxes in the county.
Uh, so it's in the, it doesn't specifically say that, but it's in the building code. So there's not an exemption for shipping containers in the building code, therefore, it qualifies as an accessory building, which we permit accessory buildings. I mean, if you want it black and white in there, we could add it, but it-
I did not, I did not grasp that from reading this, so I think it does need to be in black and white, because that was where my, my earlier comment was, it appears that the variance commission is treating these as a building, and yet, everybody tonight, and, and people that I know who have these, whether they're in Clay County, or Clinton County, or elsewhere, they don't view these as buildings. They're viewing them as storage containers, movable, personal property, you don't get to tell me what to do with it, because it's not attached to the ground. Uh, I can, another example, I can go buy a tough shed, and have it delivered to my property and set on property, there's no foundation, it's not even attached to the ground, unless, unless I wanna sink and anchor. That's usually how these shipping containers are viewed, is, it's just a really large, secure, waterproof, rodent-proof tough shed.
Which those, those sheds are required to have a permit if they exceed a hundred and twenty square feet.
So there's where the requirements are, that I think we probably should go ahead and put in here. I know it's elsewhere, but I'm not grasping it, and I'm not sure anybody else.
Well, and the reason we don't is, like, in the, this is in the same section as the swimming pool code, or the solar panel code. We don't specifically say in those sections, hey, you need a building permit, it's just part of it, but we could, so I, I have no issue, you know, making it clear, so we'll, we'll add that with what we present to you next time.
Well, and, and going back to what we had in the original current code, was it was very clearly stated that you did have to get a permit, because it was a construction site, because it was temporary, and I, I think if we don't add that language in here, we're going to have an awful lot of people who say, it's personal property, it's not a structure, it's not permanently attached, therefore, why do I have to get a building permit?
Well, that's why you pay us, 'cause we make them get a building permit, but I get it, we can add that, no big deal.
Well, I think if we're already having problems with the variance commission, you know, approving two of these boxes on something that's much, much smaller than what we had allowed, I think the, the clearer we can make it, the better, but, do you have any other questions for us? Is that enough information for you to?
I think I'm good. Yes.
Okay. So we're looking at not having a meeting in August, so this would be September?
As of now, we don't have any applications that we'd need to come in front of this board, that could change within the next week, but as soon as that deadline passes, we will let you know. If we do get a, an application, then we'll bring this back, if you decide to go that route, we'll bring this back with it, if not, we would bring it back when we have another application to go in front of the board.
Well, my other question was, we've had some of these where we have intentionally moved them out two months to give you time to, to get through the review process, do you need that additional time?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right.
You still need a motion?
Gonna need a motion to postpone this until the next meeting, whenever that shall be.
So I make a motion, we table this until our next normal, regularly scheduled meeting?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
David Rode, uh, sorry, Tom Decker. Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any other business?
No other business, but I do have some comments.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, so like I stated, we don't currently have any applications, but look for an email next week for a definite whether we'll have a meeting next month or not. Um, just so you know, the planning and zoning department went live with a new permitting and application software called CityWorks. It allows applicants to apply for planning cases, building permits, submit code enforcement cases, uh, online, and track those different cases or permits through the process. Uh, it also streamlines things for staff, so that's exciting for us. Um, as everybody knows, the solar was withdrawn, so if they would, if they would have won, would want to bring that back, it would be a new application, and we would have to go through the public notice process again, they would basically have to start over. Um, and then, just a reminder that our first case will be heard by the county commission on July seventeenth at six P.M. in this room, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else?